Let's call the meeting back to order. Five minutes turns into fifteen around here, real quick.
Only because there's pizza.
Thank you to Costello. I'll call the meeting back to order. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, October 19th. We've had the pledge of allegiance already of their additional agenda or consent items. I'd like to add one agenda item at the very bottom, I guess, as we adjourn. I'd like to go to executive session on a real estate matter, if I may.
So moved. To include?
To include.
Attorney O'Connell?
Attorney O'Connell. You want to stick around that long?
I'll run your service.
Well, why don't we decide that we're going to executive session for real estate items, and then we'll item, and we'll figure out who's coming in when we do that at the end.
Okay, so move down the additions to the agenda.
Second.
There was a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Any other consent or additional general items? Delegations? Anyone like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? Open discussion right now. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 5th.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 5th, 2016, as submitted.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further comments, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of October 19th, 2016, in the amount of $1,999.30. Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, first item is the discussion, the possible action of public hearing, from the public hearing regarding the ordinance establishment of the police commission. I welcome comments. Let me see, is there clarification on anything? Well, I'll take comments first, and who would like to start?
Would you like me to start?
Only if you'd like to.
I would.
Otherwise, I will. Go for it.
Well, if you want to go first, you can.
It's just not the right thing to do.
Okay.
But make sure you're on the mic. I've been getting some calls, Mrs. Hardy, the town, first selectman's office, about Mrs. Hardy speaking too softly.
She's like Teddy Roosevelt. Speak softly.
And?
Carries a big stick.
Okay. We pay for a membership in CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and I would like to request that there be a, that we request from them a comparative survey of communities similar to ours in size, of salaries paid to their chief of police. And I would also like to know how many of these communities have an elected police commission, and how many have an appointed.
Terrific. My research on elected versus appointed, by the way, is about 2% elected, the rest are appointed. But we can get you that information from CCM or the Police Chiefs Association, which seems to have better numbers by my workings, because, again, I've been working on this for a year. But I'd be happy to give you that information on what chiefs get paid, and that is coming right from the Police Chiefs Association on how much they get paid on the average, between a town our size, 85 to 105, and in my calculations, I put down 100. But I will get you those details.
Okay. We heard a lot tonight about cost neutral, and I think that we should do the job right in the first place. And we have, I'm sure that you've already sent a directive to department heads to begin looking at their budget, and I think that, short of thinking of a new building, which is desperately needed, I think that we should do the job the way it should be done. I don't think we should be hiring a chief of police and having the chief of police drive around in a used car. I think it's insulting. We want the person to have a presence, we want the person to have stature, and I think that that's not a good way to start off. I think we should be willing to pay the money for that. I think we should be willing to pay the money for a lieutenant, and, as we've all said, this is long overdue, and I think it's time that we stepped up to the plate and paid to do it correctly. And I think our number-one responsibility by the charter for the Board of Selectmen is we're responsible for public safety. And so, as far as the comment about we perhaps putting the cart before the horse in appointing the police commission, well, if we're not going to go to an independent police department, we don't need a police commission. So I think that there should be, I think that the decision should be made, whether or not we're going to have an independent police department, and then if we are, then we have the police commission, who then goes ahead and does the work to make that happen. Is it a requirement that if we go to an independent police department, that we must have a police commission? Is this not a duty that can be performed by the Board of Selectmen? That's an inquiry.
Mr., we can go one by one, it might make it more efficient. Mr. O'Connell will speak to that, certainly as a question that I had.
The state statutes provide that. If a municipality establishes an organized police department, there must be a police commission, and that the police commission must consist of three, five, or seven members. The Board of Selectmen is six members, so that would disqualify the Board of Selectmen serving as the police commission.
Okay. Well, you're up at the podium, anyway. I know that the state law says that you may require a superintendent of schools to live in town, and that's an exception. What about the requirement that a chief of police live in town? Are we able to make that a requirement?
I'd have to do research on that. Residency requirements are quite often challenged, especially durational residency requirements. So I'd have to do research on that.
Well, the only reason that I realized that is that, as I said, they had to make a special exemption to allow towns to require that the superintendent of schools live in town. We currently have a resolution. This was enacted by the Board of Selectmen to make the first selectman, the town agent as chief of police. Do we, first of all, have to, if we decide to go in that direction, do we have to, what do I want to say?
Rescind?
Rescind that resolution first, before we go forward?
The way the ordinance is drafted is that upon the establishment of the police department, and the establishment date is defined in the ordinance, that the resolution designating the first selectman as the chief of police will contemporaneously be rescinded. I think it's in paragraph.
That's item 10 in your resolution, your ordinance. It just rescinds the amendment ordinance concerning the terms of appointment and qualifications of constables for the rank. Oh, it's the one before that, it would be 9C, resolution regarding the establishment of resident policemen in the town of East Line, that will be repealed. B is a resolution designated first selectman as town agent to act as chief of police, that will be repealed. So you'll see that in nine, A, B, C, and then 10. Kind of cleans up, this one ordinance cleans up all the other items referred to.
Thank you. We heard a comment tonight about board not relying on town committees for appointments, and I would like to clarify that we oftentimes get recommendations from the town committees as for appointments, but we do not necessarily always accept those. We're always open to applications from the public for those people who wish to serve on various boards and commissions.
Can I speak to that, Roseanne?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you on that? I think, and I'm not sure it was clear to the public, that the first selectmen doesn't make these appointments, the Board of Selectmen do. And we very often will have received resumes. I've seen people come up and make, not presentations, but sort of a public introduction of themselves and their qualifications. On a new commission like this, I would envision that we'd even, maybe even go through, depending on the number of applications, maybe even an interview process. I don't know if that can be done publicly or privately, but with this Board of Selectmen, should we choose to remain appointing these people, would be done so, yes, through the public, accepting applications to the Board of Selectmen, and all six would vote and have an equal say on that, those appointments, not the first selectman. I think that came out a few times, and I hope, I just want, I wish to clarify that.
Well, I also want to clarify that appointments that we make to other boards and commissions are not appointments that are dictated by the town committees. The town committees may forward names to us.
That's correct.
But that is not automatic, that those people are going to be.
And that's important. It's, it came up, actually, in conversation with a few members of our public tonight. It doesn't have to go through the boards, the Republican Town Committee, the Democrat Town Committee, any citizen of the town can do that. The Board of Selectmen would have an obligation that we put the proper number of Republicans, Democrats, independents, Green Party, Libertarian, so the whole board isn't made up of one party. We do have an obligation to that. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
It's a minority representation.
Yes. But we do not need to necessarily accept or, yeah, accept, or only appoint those recommended by a political committee.
And my final comment at this time is that I really hate to have to put more money into a building that really is not appropriate. And we really, for those people who think that this is not going to be coming forward, it won't be coming forward this year, but it has to be done. And it's a shame that we have to sink more money into a building that is inappropriate for our current police force and the public needs of the town. I would also like to have additional time to review the comments from tonight. We had many comments from the public, and I would, I would hope that we would not be considering voting on this this evening. Oftentimes, people who, for one reason or another, are not able to attend this meeting will view it afterwards on TV, and they may have some comments that they would like to make for us. I oftentimes have people come up to me after a meeting, a few days after, and say that they saw it on TV, and they have a particular comment that they would like to make.
People actually watch this?
They do.
Well, I know we're going to be the most interesting thing on TV tonight.
I don't think so. I think we should have the TV, TiVo'd in for us.
Not the most entertaining.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy, always pointed.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Just start with, in regard to the chief's car, I understand what Roseanne's saying, but $30,000 would get a very, very good vehicle, and, you know, the chief of police, you know, is not normally involved in responding to incidents, although he has the full authority to respond, get involved in any type of pursuit. But I know with the state police, they always got a little scaled-down version and a little more affordable because of the fact that they are not considered frontline responders or first responders to incidents. So knowing what would be involved and knowing the capabilities of our departments, I'd be confident with that $30,000 being set aside. The building, as Dave Tretter, Dave's a great trooper, I know him personally well, he's a fantastic resident trooper. We've acknowledged that, we do need a new building, and, you know, even if we stayed with this current setup, we need a new building. And the $30,000 we're spending now is just a stopgap, just so if we don't do it, then every time we stop somebody, we have to take them to Waterford. Now, at least, if it's someone that we can process and release, it keeps our officer in town for that little bit of time, so I'm comfortable with that. Getting to the police commission, I think some good points were brought up tonight, and I'm, I'm comfortable with Roseanne's suggestion that we don't necessarily, that we don't vote tonight. I think Mark Powers gave us a great, you know, the reality is, it's a political, somewhat political appointment regardless, whether we elect or not. I've done a little bit of research, and I've only found, I think, three departments in the state, and I think there's 38 to 39 departments in the state, have elected police commissions. A lot of the bigger towns, Danbury, Hartford, so forth, they don't even have a police commission because they've been established for so long, it's not a requirement. So I'd like, kind of what Mark said, have a couple people from each town committee brought up. That way, we ensure the minority representation. And then a couple people who just, you know, are just concerned citizens and would like to come up and offer their services, look at it that way. I think that does a better job of keeping politics out, because at least two of those people aren't coming through what we'd consider, you know, the Democratic or Republican machine. I'd love to do that. Also, possibly term limits. We're talking about a commission that's going to have a lot of access to information and so forth, and the longer they're there, you don't want them building too big of a power base possibly, and so forth like that. You know, possibly two consecutive four-year terms wouldn't be a bad idea. And if somebody does the two-year to begin, they can stay 10 years, you know, two, you know, the two-year to end, possibly two full. But that's, I think, one of the reasons we don't need to vote, that we can talk about it, too. And one other thing, too, is I think you have to make sure you've got some very good people on this commission, because, I mean, the commissioners have no law enforcement authority, have no ability to direct police officers. They're there to supervise, you know, provide what is needed for the department. And, but they are going to occasionally have access to some type of sensitive information, so I think it's really necessary. We have the best possible people in that, and I know we have some fantastically qualified people in this town. So I think those are the other comments. And I liked what you said about beginning, too, about the first selectman. I think it's important, especially at the start, that the first selectman be a contributing, voting member of the commission, because there's going to be a lot of work being done heads-on on a day-to-day basis, and the first selectman's involvement in that process is going to be extremely important.
Why can't the first selectman serve as ex officio?
I think that, well, he or she could. I think the first selectman should be involved on the commission with a vote. Typically, ex officios don't get involved unless there's a, you know, point of order, and, I mean, they can, but.
You're entitled as ex officio to everything, including executive session.
Yes, you are.
Except, except you don't get a vote. That's true.
Right, but, you know, you know, we all serve as ex officios, and, of course, we serve proudly, but we're not, you know, we're not part of that Board of Select, Board of Education or the Historic Properties Commission, we're ex officios. I think it is important for the selectman, who's got a, we pay this first selectman a whole lot of money to do this job and have his or her finger on the pulse of this town, and to be watching over the tax money, and to be watching over all the different departments, all the puzzle pieces coming together. And this police, I think, is a very important, especially at the beginning, maybe, maybe we amend the ordinance five years from now and move them over to an ex officio and have seven citizens on that. But I think in this initial ramp-up, and it's not about me, because I won't be first selectman forever, but, you know, whoever it is, I think they need to be part of it, not just ex officio in the stands, just like a water and sewer. In that case, I'm the chairman of Water and Sewer. I'd rather step aside and let someone else be chair, but be part of the discussion at the commission, at the table. I think that's, I think that's the way to go, but, but it's up to us.
I have some comments to be done.
Sure.
First of all, I just want to make note that you mentioned the paying in the rears. Is my interpretation of that essentially, we've received a one-year loan, and we have to pay him at the end. So now, if, if we cut it off, we still have to pay it, but it was kind of like a year delay.
It's another metaphor.
Is that really what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not, it's going to cost us no matter what, you know?
Whatever we do.
It's just, we got a loan for a year. So, so that, to me, yeah, it's going to be a bump in the budget, but it really was just a one-year loan. Okay. We heard a lot about appointments elected, and, you know, I've given it a lot of thought. No matter what, it's a political process. If it's an elected position, then the committees are going to endorse their slate, and then they can go, and then they pretty much go up for election. So there is political there. When we come to the Board of Selectmen, I, you said it exactly right. We, we get resumes, we could choose who we pick, who we don't pick. And the number-one thing I find, and we've all been involved in politics for a while, is I try to get people involved in politics all the time. And the thing that I have a hard time is, once I tell them they got to run for something, they don't want to do it. And these people are very qualified, they just don't want to get into the political circus. So we lose qualified people. When we appoint people, they don't have that political circus, and they're more likely to be, to serve on a committee. A lot of people I've recommended, to run, they won't, and then when I recommend appointment, you know, ask them if they'd be appointed, they're interested, and it serves this town well. So is there politics here? Of course there's politics here, we're a political body, elected politically. So I don't think you're going to get around it, but I think this is a pretty good system here. We, we generally all vote together, but we don't have to. There's nothing that says we don't. And the number, the number-one reason even beyond all that is, there's really not a mechanism for independents to get on this commission if we go to elected. It forces independents, half of the people that are registered to vote are independents, they're not necessarily eligible to be, they'll have to change their affiliation or ask the RTC or the DTC to get on the board, to get, and it's less likely that they're going to. So we lose half of this population if we make it elected. So for that reason alone, I think, this is such an important board, I have to think that, that going forward with an appointed board is probably the best way to go at this Okay, the car, I agree with Kevin, they're total costs, cost neutral. So, yes, we heard a lot about that today. So what we have in front of us shows neutral. So we're trying to make this budget neutral for the next year or two. What happens beyond that is going to be up to the police commission. Mark, you bring up some good points.
Not just the police commission, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen goes through the budget process and gets vetted.
Right. Exactly. I think anything that happens in the future, whether we need more officers or if we need more admin, is going to have to happen anyways. I hate the thought that we don't have the police department open. I know this is the first time we're going to have the police department open after four, I think that's a good thing. So some of this costs, if, in the future, if it goes beyond that, it's going to provide a better service to the public. Is it going to cost? Yes. Are we a bigger town? Do we need these services? Yes. So this is an investment, okay, is how I look at it. There are some capital expenses. When it comes to, one thing, since I've been on here and a year and a half, I've been going to all the town buildings, and the one thing that always is starting to bother me is we are not maintaining our buildings. Some buildings we're maintaining, some buildings we're not maintaining, and I feel like a lot of the reason, especially watching the Board of Education, is they keep assuming that we're going to build a new school, and it keeps getting delayed and keeps getting delayed, and the buildings start crumbling down. Walking through the police department, that's what I was seeing. And I feel like we're, if we keep waiting because of the thought we're going to build, I mean, I agree, we are going to need a new building at some point, let's be real and honest with ourselves. But I think we have to do something. We can't let them work another day in these conditions. I know exactly what you're talking about after going through it, and I think they need to be done. I'll say that I did go up to Legerd, and I did talk to the new police chief there for about an hour. He did show me around the, around the building. But the number-one, and I talked to some officers there, it's working very well, in my observations there. You have a good working relationship with the chief and the first selectman, there is someone accountable for the budget, he's watching the overtime, he's in charge of all these things that we don't necessarily get in the system we're in now. I think that's so important. There's somebody accountable. That's what we need, somebody accountable to this town. So the other thing, I talked soft costs, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind if you would talk a little more about soft costs, because I think it's more than just driving up to Motville. I think there is, I think there's a double system, that you have to enter stuff into a state system, that the officers have to sit down. The more, the more our officers are driving up to Motville, the more they're sitting down doing paperwork, it's less time our officers are on the road keeping us safe. So I think there's efficiencies here that are not going to ever be shown here. And I think another thing that I've found, speaking to officers in Motville, is the morale. The morale in Legerd is so much better from interviewing and talking to these police officers up there than it ever has been. They're now responsible for their own town, they're now not going to be kicked off because a state police officer comes in. Those are costs that we can't put on here, but those are big costs to this town. A police department with high morale is a better police department, it better serves this town. And I wouldn't mind if you would speak a little bit about that, especially some of the computer systems and stuff like that, that everyone knows. I think there's other stuff that's on here. We have to maintain two radios, two computers, two belt radios, there's savings there. So I think there is plenty of savings to offset, but even if it did cost more, I think this is the right decision, moving forward. What else do I have?
We can come back.
You could come back to me. Oh, the only other thing is living in town.
He's on a roll.
Sorry, sorry. Living in town. I think it's a noble thing, and it would be great. But if, in my field, if we restricted that in hiring people, we would limit so many qualified people. The most important thing here is having somebody that's qualified, that can do the job, not necessarily that they live in town. I don't think that's, that has to be. It's nice. Oh, I noticed in the union, the police union contract, they have to live in our town or one neighbor. That's fine, but we're talking to police chief here. I hate to limit our search. And I hate to limit our search to tell someone that if you come here, you have to buy a house. Well, what if they live in Legerd? I mean, what if they live a few towns? We're going to make them come here? They're not going to come here. So we're going to reduce the talent pool, and I think that is not what we want to do to start this off. We need the most competent applicants here, and we don't need to hamstring them. That's all I got for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno. I'll go to my left. Anything to add?
Well, I did, I'll be very brief, because everybody else has been very comprehensive. I would echo what Mr. Salerno said about appointed versus elected. I, too, have seen the hesitancy of people to throw their hat in the ring of the idea that they're going to have to run, and the fact that, as he said, there's a large number of unaffiliated voters here whom we would disqualify. I think the most important thing in looking for the police commission, and I am confident the Board of Selectmen will be looking for this, is to find the right mix of individuals with both experience of police departments, but also knowledge of the community, a good head on their shoulders, and I feel that with the people we have who live in our town, we are going to be able to find that appropriate mix. I am open to, as Selectman Hardy said, looking at what other towns are doing. I know a lot of research has been done by both of her selectmen and Mr. Siri, but in terms of their, you know, term limits, makeup of commissions, I think we, we cannot be hurt by having more information at our disposal when we are, in fact, drawing up this ordinance. And my understanding is, it would have to be altered anyway with the recommendation that we go to a seven-person ordinance. So the preponderance of testimony tonight has been that this is the right way to go. I think the question is, when this, because this is the right way to go, we have to get the wording and the details absolutely right.
Thank you, Mrs. Cheeseman. All set. Mr. Cunningham.
Well, a lot of ideas have been put out there, and some of which I would have made, but when I was heading into the meeting tonight, I, I felt very strongly that the, the police commission should be an elected commission. But after listening to some of the ideas and getting a better understanding, I think, of the pros and cons to that approach, I think if we can come up with some blended system, and I agree with Mr. Salerno that there's, there isn't any way that it, there isn't some political process that's gonna be involved in that, that commission. But I think we should try to limit it, and I, I think the idea that the two committees, Democrats, Republicans, they, they, they appoint however many to, presumably, and then maybe the board, just accepting resumes from the public, to really open it up for anyone that isn't affiliated with a party, I think that's a great idea. The more diversity and cross-pollination of ideas that you get on that board, I think it's gonna protect the town. You know, you've seen an awful lot of litigation and claims against police departments over the last few years, and anything that we can do to accommodate the broadest points of view on that commission, I think will be important. So I certainly agree with seven members. The issue, again, Mr. Salerno made about morale, I, I think that's a huge and important aspect of what we're doing. The sense I got from the comments tonight was that there's, there's a positive tone. I think many people, if not everybody, is, it seems to be in favor of the idea of going independent. The details here, we're trying to iron out, I think we need just a little more time, so that, you know, this ordinance does need to be amended anyhow, because of the seven members, but there's some other things here that I think we have to iron out. But it seems to be the way to go. The police, the police vehicle, I think it's important to have a vehicle that establishes, you know, the, the hierarchy, and that that person's in charge of the situation when they show up on the scene. So, and it sounds like, whatever the number is, if it's thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand, that we can put a car together that looks like something, you know, the lead vehicle. I think that's important. As far as the improvements, I, I know eventually we are gonna need a new police station, you know, the numbers, Mr. Nickerson talked about some numbers tonight, six million, eight million, whatever it is, but it's, it's not the end of the world, it's something that needs to be done eventually. And right now, we have what we have, and there are upgrades that need to be accommodated in that building. The ability to process prisoners locally, at least for, you know, a less serious crime, that's important, because every time you're transporting somebody over to Waterford, and then you're transferring control to the Waterford Police Department, you're also increasing the risk of, we're losing control over protecting our town from a lawsuit. So I think if we can, the, the more that we can keep the prisoners in town, process them as much as we can here, we have greater control over the attitude of our police department, and I think we are protected in that way, liability-wise. So I think that's an important aspect, and something to think about. So that's all I have.
I have a couple of follow-ups. We budgeted money, maybe four years ago, for establishing a processing area at the current building. What happened to that?
Why would we have? We aren't under state police control, we couldn't process anybody locally, right?
We budgeted money for some kind of a processing area, for bringing people in.
Was it appropriated and approved? Or was it part of a capital, oh, are you talking about a, what do you call it, Sally Port?
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're talking about.
And it's supposed to be a shower area there, or something, an area to clean?
We never, we never appropriated, never spent it. They never actually made it through the process, the Sally Port. I don't believe.
It was identified in the CIP, but it wasn't.
It was to, onto the microphone, it was, it was part of the CIP plan, but we never punched it through.
Right, we never got it. Okay. Two other things quickly. The fingerprinting ID system that we're going to need, does that also satisfy for FBI clearance?
Yes.
Okay? So anybody that needs that kind of, and then my last point for this evening is the payment of services, and we're going to be billed for services from Waterford.
Correct.
And there's quite a pay differential between what Waterford pays its people and what we pay ours, and we will not have any control over that.
And we're not paying for officers in Waterford?
We're paying billing for services, including overtime.
That we're paying a portion, a portion of their costs per prisoner, and that is, that's a detail I'm working out with Chief Brett Mahoney and, and First Selectman Dan Stewart, that we either go to a per diem, per cost, per day, or just a one-time fee per year, but it would cover the costs, the money would go to reimbursing them for their employment, their, the blankets that the prisoner gets, the food that they'd have to pay for the prisoner. But, yes, they, they do have a different pay scale, there's no question about it, and that's why these costs are a little different than what we would maybe charge, say, old line, someday. Yeah.
Well, let me chime in.
Yeah.
Again, that's a reason for trying to, to the extent that we can process prisoners in East Line, it reduces the overall cost, soft costs.
Well, not only that, but, you know, this Waterford bill would be much higher if we brought all two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred people that we pull over, need to process. If we brought them all to Waterford and processed them there, they would charge us a whole lot more. This forty would be more like sixty or seventy, and this is why we're trying to, and that's why I listed forty thousand on your sheet, but I think it's gonna be closer to twenty, twenty-five thousand at the end of the day. I think there's some savings in there, once we really identify that we can establish this processing center on Main Street here, and we can do about seventy percent of the arrests, I call them arrests, I don't know what you call them, arrests, and twenty-five percent might end up in Waterford. And if it's twenty, if it's about three thousand, three hundred people a year, you can figure out the cost there. It, it's a, it's a floating number that I gotta nail down, but I think, we talked about the cart and the horse all night, I'm trying to get this done first and then establish that. But we know that the maximum cost would be forty thousand, we've already gotten that.
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Sergeant Mason, what would be the criteria percent, let's, let's say we do have a facility for what we have here, would it be the seriousness of the crime, or the, how violent the individual is? What would be the reason?
Those are just a couple of things that would be taken into consideration, obviously. By being able to process a prisoner here, we're looking at, you know, more minor arrests, something like a breach of peace, or, you know, somebody stole things from Rite Aid or whatever the case may be. When we get to the individuals who are violent, where, say, the temporary holding cages that we've looked at to put in a facility, may not be able to handle that person who's constantly jumping up and down, trying to wreck things, that's where the hard cells would come into consideration, for that type of person, a DUI arrest where they're, have to stay there for four hours. Somebody who's held on a warrant, or has been arrested on a warrant, who has a bond, a cash bond, say they can't make bond that night, the bondsman, they don't have the collateral to put up, they would stay over in the Waterford facility for that, for that night. And if it was on a weekend, maybe they get transferred to Corrigan or York, depending, and then would be transferred by that unit to the courthouse Monday morning.
Okay, thank you.
I, I spoke a lot tonight, but I'd just add a few more things. I, I really do appreciate the public coming out. You know, we heard a lot, I, I was perplexed with the comments about they should be elected, because we wanna keep politics out of it. But if you're elected, you are a politician, and you're very much part of it, politics plays in it, and I think politics frankly plays in decisions about being re-elected and playing to the people versus doing the job. And we, we all try to keep politics out of it, and I know that the day after election, it becomes not who's in what party, it becomes doing right for the town. And I know, no matter what we do, that the, the commissioners here will, will do a fine job. I, I do believe an appointed group is, is the right way to go, I feel very strongly about that. I do recommend term limits, maybe two terms, and I'm gonna have, if that's possible, if Mr. O'Connell, I will have a conversation, if we can maybe figure out if that's illegal, if, if we can draft that, and otherwise, we can kind of maybe encourage selecting. You know, people come up for reappointment, and typically on some of these, I don't wanna call them small or minor commissions, 'cause everybody plays an important part in this town, you know?